First order of business into closed meeting, be it resolved that Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, one discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. Number one, planning commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 We're in closed meeting.
Closed meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Chairwoman Evans.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Out of closed meeting. Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chairwoman Evans.
Aye.
Six ayes.
At this time, I would ask if our Deputy County Administrator, Ms. Angie Hill, and CFO, will lead us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand as you're able. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first up, presentation, recognitions, and awards at Virginia Department of Transportation, and I see Mr. David Clark. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just a couple of things, really, to update you this week, for this month, not a lot of exciting stuff going on, which is generally a good thing, except for this past weekend, we did have a little bit of a weather event that turned out not so bad, as far as flooding and things like that, but we were prepared for a lot of stuff that was predicted and didn't get quite as much, which is good. But, other than that, a couple of things we have been working on, just trying to get ahead of the gravel roads before winter, and before a lot of that rain hits. We did do a lot of machining roads, hauling stone onto the roads, because we don't haul a lot of stone in the winter, because it tends to get just pushed off, so we'll do another big hauling of stone on some of the gravel roads again in the spring. Cut some brush, most notably on Craig Creek Road, some on Glade, Brooksfield, a couple of ash trees, we've been working on trying to get a lot of those, did some patching on Onyx Road, and our major kind of maintenance project was doing some major ditching and shoulder work on Route 11 between Christiansburg and Charlottesville, just on the, going down the mountain part. Project-wise, we've got, we had a low-water structure at Pilot Post Office project going on, if that's finished, if you're familiar with that area, it floods quite a bit, gets up out in the road. This was taking a series of pipe and putting in a series of box culverts, so that should keep the flooding down there at Pilot Post Office, and if you're out there and notice having to repave it, we had some issues with the paving over top of that at first, but that's been, that's been corrected. And that's it, that's all I have for updates. Like I said, not a whole lot of other than just kind of ordinary routine maintenance going on.
Very good. We'll go around to see if any supervisors have any comments. Supervisor King.
Have no question, me and him talk before the meeting. Thank you.
We've got a couple of signs we still have to get, so, thank you.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
I just have two things, and they're both on Craig's Mountain Road. The first one is, like, back in January, I had a citizen complain, and we did, I think you've sent some people out there to do some measuring, and I think the Sheriff's Office did a speed study, which I shared, and the citizen has contacted me again and was asking about some signage, or some line painting.
I think some line was approved, I'll have to check on that, but I remember hearing something recently about that, and my assistant, who's been talking to the citizen, I think was gonna get in contact with him.
Okay, yeah, if you find out something, if you could just shoot me an email, or whatever, so I can, I can touch base with them. The other, I had another citizen, same road, they were in the 1500 to 1600 block, and they said that the, the road was deteriorating, and I guess this, this should be, I guess, on the paved portion of it. I haven't had a chance to get out there to look at it, but I was planning on going out there Friday if I, if I get the time, but, but they said it was in that general area, so, they, I'm not sure if it was the edge of the road that was breaking apart, or if it was in the, in the gravel lane.
I'll take a look to 1500 to 1600?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Craig Mountain still, right?
Yep, still Craig Mountain, yeah. That's all I got, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Just one thing, and I know it's, it seems minor, but it could get bad, and it's in a location that would be very low on your radar, with a holler, right near the end, there's a culvert that goes under the road, and I guess it's pieced, spliced in the center of the road, and it's leaking, I guess, and pulling the gravel, and they patched it once, and it's gotten a lot worse since then, so, I don't know, I guess keep patching it to asphalt eventually I get to it, but.
Yeah, until it just becomes where we gotta just dig the whole thing up.
It's right in the middle of the road.
Yeah, that's where they come apart, and, you know, try not to have to dig them all up, but sometimes you have to dig it up and then replace the pipe.
Yeah, that's all I got, thank you.
Supervisor Demott.
Good evening, thanks for being here. Just a follow-up question, we've asked you a couple of times, do you have any updates on the traffic circle on Price's Fork, or any, any more information, especially now that it's getting dark so early?
Nothing new on that, I know we've received some, some good suggestions from some, some citizens out in the area, our traffic engineering people are still reviewing that, the question is, you know, where, where to put any kind of new signs, it's, it's a tough place, really, with the other intersecting roads, I've just noticed that in the daytime, I'm gonna take a ride at night and take a look at it myself, but it's an ongoing discussion with us and our traffic people.
Thank you, that's all I had, appreciate it.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Yes, David, I had a question about something that I've been trying to find out information about, I know how I personally feel about it, but evidently, there are logging companies that want to increase the weight of logs that they're allowed to carry on the interstate, so that puts more weight onto the trucks, and I was interested in, has VDOT taken a stance on that, or has, have you given any guidance as to whether that would be a good idea or not?
I've not heard anything about that, generally, if there's gonna be a new, if it's legislation that's gonna come up in the General Assembly, that would increase the weight limit, I don't know if there's anything different for logging trucks or any other kind of trucks, we just tend to look at it as just whatever the weight would be, and whether they're in tandem, how many there are, but it would be sent through VDOT, we, we track legislation as, if it relates to roads quite a bit, and would write a, an assessment, an impact statement for, for the General Assembly on that, but I haven't seen anything, I'll, I'll check and see if there's anything being proposed.
It's at the federal level right now, and it, it could maybe be acted on during the lame duck session, or it might be carried over into January, but I understand, you know, you know, if you have a company and you're trying to make money, and, and you, you know, it's a shorter way to travel on an interstate versus, you know, on some of our other roads, okay, I get that, but as representing Montgomery County, I, I just can't imagine putting any more weight on trucks when we have crash after crash after crash, so that's my personal feeling on it, but I just didn't know if you had heard anything, but thank you.
I'll check it out, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clark, thank you for being here this evening, just, I wanted to follow up in the status of the, the speed limit change on Route 114.
Still, still there, getting ready to do that, it's just, just our crews, we're getting our last bit of line painting, it's gonna be the same crew that does the signs that are doing the line painting, and while we have good weather, we're still trying to get the lines.
And you'll do some type of awareness?
There'll be probably a message board up to a week beforehand, just saying, you know, "Speed limit change," and we can actually put the date that we were planning on putting the signs up.
Very good, all right, as always, thank you for your service to Montgomery County.
Thanks very much.
Next up, under presentation, Huckleberry Trail Plan, and we should have Kathleen Armstrong and Elijah Sharp from the New River Valley Regional Commission, along with Beth Loman from Friends of the Huckleberry.
All right, good evening, everyone, first, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for having us here this evening to present the newly adopted Huckleberry Trail Plan. This planning process was initiated by Beth Loman, Director of Friends of the Huckleberry, and the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. The plan was composed by a team at the New River Valley Regional Commission, and on behalf of that team, myself, Kathleen Armstrong, Community Designer, Regional Planner, and our Executive Deputy Director, Elijah Sharp, will be presenting to you guys tonight. So, as that introduction might have alluded to, there, this would not have been possible without local support, so cooperation and a collaboration across the trail owners, including Montgomery County, the Town of Blacksburg, and the Town of Christiansburg, along with our trail partners, Virginia Tech and Friends of the Huckleberry. Each of the trail owners have been operating the trail in partial autonomy for over 50 years, which makes this plan the first of its kind for this region. So, through the assistance of our trail owners and managers, we were able to establish three main goals to help frame up the plan, and those goals are as to follow: capture ideas about the future of the trail, and begin to identify areas that are mutually beneficial for collaboration; document how the Huckleberry Trail is managed today; and hear from long-distance trail managers and trail influencers. So, to kind of shape up the plan, here is a graphic timeline, which highlights the important role of, that rail and transportation has had in the, in informing development in Montgomery County and across the New River Valley. So, we also get to highlight the development of the rail as adaptive reuse into a trail, and that just continues that history and legacy even more for the region, and then as you kind of progress down the timeline towards closer to present day, you see that continued investment in our connectivity assets. So, mapping is a large part of the initial analysis, and it was to build upon recently updated GIS data to understand and document existing trail assets and amenities. So gathering and synthesizing data into maps is a crucial component of trail plans and identifying future trail opportunities. So the team at the Regional Commission utilized ArcGIS Field Collector, which is an app to browser data collection tool, and it has open sharing capabilities, and also it's a format that is easily shareable between trail owners, which makes it a really amazing tool for this kind of work. Just a little snapshot, this tool allows for GPS accuracy, you can decide on desired typology, collect data points, and then attach photos, so it becomes this living data collection, and using this tool, we were able to identify, locate, and document existing assets, including parking, water, restrooms, bike fix-it stations, and park and park amenities. So, trail assets really help build that user experience. And, as you can see here in this map, distribution of the assets are pretty consistent across the trail, and attempts to make that trail experience more cohesive is naturally taking place, noting the spread of these assets allows for prioritization of future planning efforts. So we're really lucky to have a central connecting spine between Brush Mountain at the northern terminus, all the way through Montgomery County to the south at Christiansburg, the high school, and rec center, and opportunity areas along this trail are spaces for growth, areas for activities, and moments for more meaningful placemaking. And here's a little snapshot of the existing opportunity areas that we captured along the trail, and identifying these, again, can help shape future expansions and connections, as well as identify view sheds to preserve, and intentional connections for more inclusive use. So, like I said, the, the Huckleberry Trail provides a safe recreational and commuter bike ped route connecting the north and the south of the county, and if we think about the Huckleberry Trail and our wider transportation network, we see that it plays a crucial role in the proposed valley-to-valley trail, as well as its proximity to the future passenger rail station, so. We've attempted to show the Huckleberries' role in our county's multimodal transportation system, and so here you can see the proximity to bus stops within a quarter mile, access points for additional trail networks, whether through Virginia Tech or residential spurs, and the blue and the red corridors are actually taken from the MPO's Master Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, and speaks to the overall connectivity of Montgomery County. And the last goal I will talk about is gaining and seeking outside expert perspectives, and it's important to see what other communities are doing as far as trail planning, where they're finding successes, and where they're finding common challenges. So, we engage with three different trail experts, we have NOVA Parks, which is Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, and they're a multi-jurisdictional park authority that really are experts in maintenance and agreements, and they helped us identify areas of mutual collaboration for, as far as maintenance goes. And then we have Virginia Capital Trails Foundation, which operates more like Friends of the Huckleberry, and so they spoke with us about long-term volunteer recruitment and event planning, and also how to find areas of engagement. And then, finally, cycle forward, and Amy Camp is a trail expert and consultant out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and she came down and led a full-day stakeholder engagement event, where she helped to build that trail culture and open pathways for deeper conversation and collaboration within the, our trail stakeholder network. And, so, like I said, it was a full, full-day stakeholder engagement, and in the morning we went out on the Huckleberry Trail and did some observational kind of collection, and then, in the, at the afternoon, we came back here to the Government Center, and we actually did a participatory feedback process, and so here are some sticky notes that And so here are some sticky notes that were responses from workshop participants. And it kind of brings up some of those emergent themes from the session. And with that, I will pass it over to Elijah Sharp.
All right. Good evening. I was trying to observe how to click. I'm going to bring this up here if that's okay. We had a great time working on the Huckleberry Trail Plan. And before I begin, I'd just like to say thank you to Montgomery County, the staff in Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Planning contributed a significant amount of their time to help us with this initial phase of the Huckleberry Trail Plan. And the first step was, we've got 15 miles of trail, and we wanted to know who's involved and who's doing what. So Kathleen created this really, probably be my favorite spread in the plan. It's like retro 70s kind of graphic that shows trail owners and trail partners, and that's a common theme. We use those to kind of document the roles of who could contribute to different strategies in the action planning chapters of the plan as well. You can see the towns of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County are trail owners. And so they're taking care of things like trail management, planning, trail expansion and connectivity to the multimodal transportation network. And then you've got trail partners, Virginia Tech and Friends of the Huckleberry, who are landowners, and they also acquire land for future trail projects. They've done a lot of great work in mapping recently, and they also contribute a lot to fundraising and volunteer support. So one of the first things we jumped into was kind of trying to document some of the current best management practices, routine maintenance that each of the trail partners currently contributes, and how frequently they take on these routine goals. And so just to show you that we did speak with everybody and ask them, how frequently do you know, how often do you empty trash cans and things like that? So that we could come up with kind of a general rules of thumb that if we wanted to create consistency from one point of the trail to the other end, we could kind of adopt these kind of best management practices throughout the trail system. Next, we took a look at some design considerations, and we had a lot of fun here. There were four really great resources, and I won't read these to you, but they're listed down the left-hand side of these next three slides that I will share. There's three distinct planning areas that we took a look at and the different characteristics that you might expect in a trail in each of those areas. The first being rural, second suburban, and then the third urban. And so in the rural area, you're expecting to have little interaction with people, a lot more solitude. The trail doesn't need to be as wide. You may not need a restroom every couple of miles and things like that. So you can space the trailheads and restrooms further apart. So we've got some good expectations from these different resources about how you space those different amenities, because our partners were kind of curious. What is the expectation of trail users for these different types of amenities? And we also had some suggestions in landscaping and vegetation. Really, in rural areas, you're mainly just trying to combat invasive species and keep them back from the trail. In suburban areas, you're going to have kind of an equal blend of solitude and interaction with other people. You're going to start to see some interactions with adjacent property owners, too. So vegetation plays a key role in complementing the trail and how it navigates through the community. At this point, you may want to start considering also widening the trail if it's used very heavily. And so we took a look at some really interesting stuff to a detail-oriented person, like how many users can you have on the trail if it's only eight to 10 feet wide? And the answer is 300 one-way users an hour. That's a lot. So I think we're pretty in great shape in most of our trail segment. However, at 11 feet, you get a perceived third lane. And so you get that passing lane. If two people are walking side-by-side, bicyclists, or someone jogging, we'd feel comfortable just passing the two people in the other two perceived lanes. So that was kind of interesting to see what the differences were there. In urban, you have the most intensity, the most intense use, the most interaction with other people on the trail. Not only are you going to have adjacent property owners, but you may have adjacent businesses and things that are trying to cater to users of the trail. And so the interactions become a whole lot more interactive. And the trail, absolutely, if you're going to widen a trail, you would consider it in this area. And if you go up to 11 to 12 feet, you can actually increase to 500 one-way users each hour. A lot more amenities are kind of considered expectation-wise at these segments of the trail. And you can see rest stops and rest areas are suggested to be around the two- to three-mile mark. We did talk with someone who maintained a 40-mile-long trail and they only had two restrooms. And we have a 15-mile trail with one, so I think we're in great shape compared to that. So don't beat yourself up trying to get more restrooms on the trail. So that was nice to hear, talking with some outside experts. The next thing that was really great to have a conversation around was the concept of creating trail segments that were accessible to all people of all abilities. And we were noting these in the plan as blue-ribbon sections of the trail. And we've got two segments that we would suggest could fit this criteria, and one of them is absolutely in the Montgomery County section. But there's also some design considerations that we may not be thinking about currently, such as everywhere you have a bench, you may want to have a three-by-four pad next to the bench so someone in a wheelchair could actually sit with someone using the bench. And so we've got a lot of great benches, but I don't know if we have a whole lot of that happening in those more-level segments that are starting to be common practice in these blue-ribbon sections nationwide. So then the next thing we asked all of our trail owners and partners was, there was a lot of ideas. Let's work on something together. And so if you start to collaborate, what do we want to collaborate on? And this is a great spread in the plan as well, because the further left you go on the page, the more open and interested all of the trail partners and owners are in working collaboratively on these topics in the little balloons. The further right you go, there's a little bit more hesitation. It's not that there is interest, but there's some more works, more conversations that need to be had. But there's four or five really great ideas, actually 10 great ideas in our action plan that you all could start framing up and collaborating with the other owners and partners on, and see some really positive results, because people are genuinely excited about those topics. And one of those, I'll just share with you, there's some precedent imagery across the top as well. So you can go with lower-cost improvements and things like roadway crossings. You don't necessarily have to have the concrete bumpouts. You can incorporate art and be creative. Or the image in the top-left is more of a gateway trailhead, is what we are referring to there. That's something that has more of a branded kiosk area, but it looks consistent at these different locations. And it's a little bit more elevated kind of entrance that would be along the trail. And we looked at three to four potential locations along the trail system. So last, I'll share the plan for collaboration. There were five things that we thought we could collaborate on today, or that we're doing really great, and that's, we want to continue focusing on maintaining a high standard on the trail that was echoed across all trail owners, continue to expand the trail system. And then there's those gateways, develop three to four gateways. Streamlining event coordination is also happening right now. If you have an event where you have runners or something on the trail, they actually have to coordinate with all three trail owners. So we're trying to create a single point of application that would help coordinate that for people that would like to have events on the Huckleberry. And Friends is working with all the trail owners on that, and I believe they've made some really good progress. And then this last one is identifying more ways to contribute. We had to kind of pause on this a little bit. There were a lot of business owners, a lot of citizens that really are passionate about the Huckleberry and want to give back. And so we were asking some of the other trail managers how they create more options for people to contribute. And one of the ways was this idea of a trail ambassadors program, where people would be on the trail, they would have equipment, maybe fix-a-flat or a first aid kit or something, or be able to help people navigate to where they would like to go. And then also some more ideas around how people could donate things other than benches. I don't know if you caught it, we were going through a lot of maps there, but one of the maps that looks really great is the number of benches along the trail. And so figuring out, how do we absolutely continue to do benches, but can we do some other things on the trail? And then there's the vision plan as well. Here's 10 other ideas. I believe the final version had 11, which are also really great things that are likely concepts that are being worked on by one owner, maybe two, that might catch on and be something that the others may want to consider. And so in closing, our goal was to capture ideas about the future of the trail and also identify areas that would be mutually beneficial for collaboration, hear from some other trail managers and influencers, and then document how the trail was managed today. Moving forward, we know that there's an interest to talk more about longer-term visioning on the trail, also about future extensions and where does the Huckleberry Trail begin and end, was a question that came up during our meetings. And then more expanded public engagement and broader community engagement. There were a lot of people that wanted to contribute and attend our meetings that ultimately, because of the topics we were focused on, they probably wouldn't have been as excited if they got in the room with us. And so there's a good energy for that if we've got some time to put in that direction. And so I will turn it over now to Beth Lohman for some closing remarks.
I don't know if I needed to move that. I'm a little shorter. Good evening. First, I want to thank the county staff and the board for providing the opportunity for the Regional Commission and Friends of the Huckleberry to co-present on the new Huckleberry Trail Plan. One of the main goals of this presentation is to bring awareness of the plan to the local decision-makers, and that's all of you. Kathleen and Eli have already provided the plan details, and I just want to provide a few comments on the importance of the trail plan. Since 1991, Friends of the Huckleberry has worked in partnership with local communities and governments to promote and fund and to help construct and maintain the Huckleberry Trail. For the first time in the history of the organization and in the history of the trail, we, the trail managers and the stakeholders, have a plan to guide and sustain the trail. With broad community support for a connection to downtown Christiansburg and the Valley-to-Valley Connector, as well as planning for the new passenger rail station, the timing of the plan could not be more perfect. As the Regional Commission staff have outlined, the plan is an aspirational document. It defines areas of common interest where key public, nonprofit, and private stakeholders can collaborate to elevate the profile of the trail and to improve trail users' experiences. What the plan is not, it's not a prescriptive plan that tells trail managers and partners how to manage their section of the trail, rather it helps frame a partner-driven collaboration on priorities for the trail. Plan implementation will require many more detailed conversations with the trail managers and stakeholders, so there's a lot more work ahead of us. The plan has many benefits, but the most significant are recognizing the importance of outdoor recreation as a component of community health, something we've all become acutely aware of since the beginning of the pandemic. Elevating the profile of the trail as a regional recreational tourism asset, especially with the conversations related to the Valley-to-Valley Connector or our adjacencies to other regional trail systems and the forthcoming Amtrak station. And creating relationships with small businesses and nonprofits for the mutual benefit of these organizations and the trail. So in closing, I want to thank the Regional Commission and the Metropolitan Planning Organization for their support in facilitating the plan development. And I look forward to working with you all and the other local governments to realize the vision laid out in the plan. That concludes my prepared remarks, but I wanted to make a special note about Mitchell Hall, the Parks and Rec Director. He's such a special fellow. He's such a joy to work with. Eli just mentioned the blue-ribbon sections of the trail, and one of those blue-ribbon sections that was identified in the trail is the section adjacent to the Coal Mining Heritage Loop Trail. There's the Warm Hearth Village community is nearby, and so many of the community members venture down the hill and use that section of the trail. And this past week, I had a call from someone that said, you know, I saw someone that had mobility challenges, and it was difficult for them to kind of maneuver through the leaf collection on the trail. So I texted Mitchell, and he had the trail cleaned right away. So he's a super special guy. I really enjoy working with him, and I just wanted to give him a shout-out this evening. So, thank you.
Beth, thank you. Supervisors, do you have any comments or questions? Supervisor Fitchakowski?
I appreciate Kathleen, Eli, and Beth for, appreciate you all coming out and providing us with this. As a member of the New River Valley Regional Commission, I know your work is exceptional, and this is no different. You all get into such detail, things that I don't know if regular people even think about. They just think about jumping on their bike and riding down the trail or going for a walk. But it was excellent presentation, and I'm really looking forward, even though it's been a couple of years since we started talking about Valley-to-Valley. And I still haven't found the person that named it that. Have you? Yeah, well, I thought maybe you'd come up with it.
I think a former supervisor was responsible for possibly attaching that moniker to it.
But I attended one of the open houses they had for the Roanoke Greenway, and they have got some challenges to get that trail from Green Hill Park to the county line. But I still am looking forward to and hope that I'm still around to do it, to get some of that federal money from the TPO to at least get us started into Montgomery County. I don't know how far it'll take us, but everybody I talked to is excited about it, and it's obvious that you all are, too, and we need to just keep this thing going. So appreciate it very much.
Just to echo Supervisor Fitchakowski's comments on the presentation, it was excellent. And I do believe I speak with the whole board that we value the Huckleberry Trail and how important the asset that is to the county. And so we do appreciate your presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is for amendment for FY 2223 budget, and this is for appropriating a future county capital improvement plan funds.
Chair Blevins, this is a housekeeping kind of item. You've approved the CIP plan, and this is a public hearing to discuss moving funds from the general fund into the capital projects fund for future unspecified projects.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing, but if you would like to come forward, you'd have four minutes to address the board. Seeing no one come forward, we will close this public hearing. The next public hearing will be the comprehensive plan amendment for James Lemon, and this is, we have Ms. Bree coming forward.
Thank you. So we do have a comprehensive plan amendment. We don't hear these very often. Once the comprehensive plan was adopted back in 2004, we followed up with a policy for processing amendments at the request of landowners, the Planning Commission, or the Board of Supervisors. They are allowed to submit applications in February and August of each year to bring to you. Luckily, the plan must have been decent, because you haven't had many, but we did get one this year. When we look at changing those, we do have a series of criteria that's also outlined in that policy and in the comp plan for considering whether the change should be made. These are the four criteria listed. I'm not going to read them to you. Basically, it's something has changed, or there's some type of hardship. Property couldn't be developed originally as intended. This is the aerial photo of the current request that we have. The request is for this smaller parcel here that is approximately seven acres, but it's part of the larger farm. You can see it's off of Falling Branch Road. This is 460 bypass and 81. The blue line is your Town of Christiansburg corporate line. So this is the aerial of the seven acres being considered for the comprehensive plan amendment. And this is the map. As you can see, the farm is divided. The seven-acre portion is in an urban expansion area, while as the other two parcels are in a rural area. So as I stated, the property is divided, even though it is three separate properties. The applicant would like to utilize the property as a horse rescue facility. It is zoned agriculture A1, so that it is a by-right use. As part of that development, they would like to obtain a conservation easement through the New River Land Trust. And that's kind of how this came about to be. The land trust contacted the planning department, as they do with all requests, to see if we could support a conservation easement. And we could support it on the two larger parcels, but not the smaller parcel, because urban expansion does not support conservation easements, because it is designed for growth. So these are the descriptions of the two comp plan designations. Urban expansion is our areas adjacent to the Town of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, the City of Radford that are planned for a broad range and mixed-use. that are planned for a broad range and mixed use of urban development densities and intensities, whereas rural areas are generally not served by public utilities. Agriculture and rural residential uses are predominant. So the seven and a half acres has limited development potential for several reasons. There is not public water and sewer in the vicinity or available to that property. There's limited access to the public roads. Currently, they access it through the main farm entrance off of Falling Branch Road. There are also some topographic challenges and ecological and environmental concerns. So staff has determined that there are likely two criteria that appear to meet this change. Undo hardship because of the topography of the site. They have also identified some wetland areas and streams that are on the property. If it were developed, it would jeopardize those resources. And then, of course, as I stated before, the absence of public water and sewer. Implementation of other Comprehensive Plan goals. The rural land use classification will allow the applicant to place the entirety of the farm within that conservation easement with the New River Land Trust, and it would allow for the preservation of ag and open space. So the applicant would also like to seek funding for their proposed use, and that funding would not be available without the conservation easement. So these are the environmental goals that will be met if the Comprehensive Plan designation is changed. Basically, they all refer to natural resource stewardship, conservation of wildlife, public open space, and ag, preservation of streams and natural resources. The Planning Commission met, and they voted to recommend approval on an eight-to-o vote. They did state that the application complies with the criteria of the Planning and Land Use Section of the Comp Plan 1.1.1B. Adjoining property owners were notified. It has been advertised in the Renate Times. We did receive one inquiry from an adjoining owner. However, they had no objections to the request. They were just questioning what it meant. Additional comments may be available in the public hearing if someone is here. The owner is here on site, Mr. Lemon, along with his brother Randy Lemon. And with that, I will take any questions you have for me.
Ms. Hopkins, we'll go around the room. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing, but if you'd like to address the board, you have four minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, we will close that public hearing. Next up, public address. The Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving of their attention during a public address. If you'd wish to speak, you want to observe the policies below. We have a sign-up sheet. After I call the names on the sign-up sheet, if you would like to come forward, you may. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. So we do have several on our list. The first name I have is Christina Waltz. Ma'am, you'll have four minutes. When it blinks yellow, that's your one-minute warning, and then red. Thank you. Christine Waltz, 1370 Rugby Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here to read a letter from one elected official to another regarding a private meeting that occurred on July 28th regarding some of the things that Christiansburg citizens were asking for. And I wanted to go ahead and put it into the record because it wasn't a public meeting. Chair Mayor Barber, thank you for the time. You and Town Manager Wingfield spent with County Administrator Meadows and me on July 28th, 2022. We appreciate you sharing the town council's concerns on several issues and for allowing us the opportunity to review and discuss these issues in more detail with our board members. Montgomery County greatly values the relationships we have with our two towns. We partner with you and many joint boards and commissions, and our employees work hand-in-hand to provide the best possible service to our citizens each day. Montgomery County also continues to make significant financial investment in promoting the economy of the downtown Christiansburg. Over the past 12 years, the county has invested in over $33 million in new and renovated facilities in the heart of downtown. This provides our employees a safe and convenient place to work, shop, and dine, and provides our citizens convenient access to county services. With regard to the three major issues we discussed on July 28th, the county responses are as follows. Consideration of a joint fire EMS facility on Roanoke Street. And actually, we wanted to discuss two, but I guess only one got it. After discussion with our board members, the county would be open to discussing future opportunities with the town for the construction of a jointly-owned fire EMS facility on Roanoke Street. Having a facility to house county EMS staff in the area would potentially benefit our citizens in that area and the town and county. If interested, please let us know, and we'll be glad to join you in discussions on this future possibility. The board stated that they are not interested in funding a new facility unless the county is an equal owner of the project. Consideration of the county funding for town police officers in Montgomery County Public Schools in the town of Christiansburg. Based on our understanding from our discussion, the town currently has three town police officers in the Montgomery County Public Schools, elementary schools within the town. You indicated that the town council requested the county provide $265,000 to offset the funding that the town has for these three officers. We asked the sheriff to meet with the two town police chiefs to discuss this issue and to ask if they recommend any changes to the current practice. The sheriff and then chiefs agreed the current system under which the town provides officers in the school facilities, while the sheriff provides deputies in the county facilities. In the unincorporated areas, the county was working well. The board has discussed this, and they agree the county should not provide funds to the town for town officers. Consideration of $2 million in annual funding for the county for the town's parks and recreation program, which I'm going to tell you, I thought that should have been, if they're going to do that, it should be a one-time ask, not a annual thing. I don't know where they came up with that number, but I was, I came here earlier to ask you to help us fund that area, and I guess this was the answer. As we discussed in the meeting on July 28th, the county's entire annual operating budget for Parks and Rec is approximately $1.6 million. The county provides recreation activities for all county residents, including residents from the two towns who wish to participate in our programs. We also provide park facilities for our county residents. We're currently expanding our offerings in the county. When the Christiansburg Town Council decided to move forward with the construction of the new park on Pepper Square Road, the county was not asked if we could partner with the town on this project. As we pursue other options to provide Parks and Rec opportunities for all county residents, the board declines to provide any funding for park facilities or programs in the town. I found this part particularly disappointing because I know that on the Montgomery County thing, you have things like the Shred-a-von, and we have no problem with that. Cherry loves helping people. It's what she does. To have a little bit of help would have been helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Waltz.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Christopher Waltz.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Rugby Street. I'm also here to speak about that letter. One, the $33 million in new and renovated facilities in the heart of downtown. I'm assuming that that figure is the courthouse that you were ordered by a judge to build. You know, the jail, the police department, the 911 center that Christiansburg is a part of and we help fund. I'm assuming that's what you were talking about. As far as the EMS facility on Roanoke Street, for years, the town has covered the county's responsibility in Shawsville when their fire and rescue closed at 7:00 p.m. But you don't think that, you know, unless you are an equal owner or, yeah, of the project. I mean, it's not about who gets credit for things here. It's supposed to be about what's best. Now, for the school resource officers, it is the county's responsibility for the schools and part of that should be, should be to provide protection for our children. Instead, we're paying for it as Christiansburg citizens when it's your responsibility. Eventually, being a nice guy and doing the right thing, there's a line there between that and being a doormat for the county. And right now, it seems that for my 89 cents per $100, I don't get my value for my tax dollar from any of y'all. And that's wrong. You should be paying for our police officers. And I hope the town finally grows a set and goes in there and tells you, we're withdrawing our officers. You figure it out. And finally, the park thing, I agree with my wife. $2 million per annual was a ridiculous ask, but I honestly think that may have been to tank the ask. But your $1.6 million, it's not really correct because I have $1.1 million for lighting, $7.6 million for an Auburn park, and these are parks that will support less than 5,000 people in the entire county. But our park, while they were probably wrong to not ask you for it, of course, as Mayor Barber said, he didn't want to ask you because then he has to share credit. There's that credit thing again. But you have a responsibility to the people who live in Christiansburg. They're your citizens, too. We get double taxed, and it seems like you don't do much for us for that tax. And one final thing, I guess, I see the Montgomery Museum's on here for tax-exempt status. You all should probably take a look at that because I know that they are and they plan on renting office space to commercial things not related to their stated purpose. And it's my understanding that there are tax laws that are involved with that as far as a nonprofit status and how you can do that, renting to for-profit entities like White Scare Photography or a yoga studio, that affects the, what amount of the property can be tax exempt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Kelly Brennan.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Brennan. I live on Sidney Church Road in Reiner. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time and attention. I'm here tonight to reflect a little bit on my experience with the Citizens Academy that recently wrapped up at the end of October. We met one night a week, September and October, eight meetings. There was a group of 17 of us. And it was really an excellent opportunity to get a broad overview and a behind-the-scenes glimpse of some of the workings of some of the departments of local government. There's a whole lot going on out there, which you all are aware of, but a lot of us average people, like Mr. Phil Jikowski was saying, we just aren't aware of. But I will tell you that we had fun and got a real education. As one academy participant said, who knew that a sewage treatment plant could be so interesting? And I'll echo that, too. From Government 101 with Chair Blevins and Mr. Meadows, Mayor Barber and Mr. Wingfield, and along with a lot of other staff, to visits with Christiansburg Fire and Rescue Squads, to town and county law enforcement and dispatch, to public works and wastewater treatment, to animal care, the Aquatic Center, Parks and Rec, library services. We covered a lot of ground and met with a lot of really dedicated and enthusiastic staff and volunteers that serve our community every day, and I just really want to applaud all of those people. And I want to thank you all for this opportunity and thank Chair Blevins and Mr. Meadows, who I'm sorry isn't here tonight, for participating in this series of classes. Also, a big thank you to Becky Hurtling, Jen Harris, and Christina Edney of the Town of Christiansburg, and a host of others in the town and county public information offices for organizing and orchestrating this academy. Their enthusiasm for this community is really infectious, and that's a great thing for PR folks. And finally, a tremendous thank you all to all the folks in their respective departments who gave up their time and energy to share a glimpse into the workings of local government. There's a whole lot we did not see in a world of workings we take for granted. And I am pleased and humbled by the service, hard work, and dedication of the public servants out there working for us every day. And of course, that includes all of you who are up here tonight in many, many nights every month in various capacities and different locales. So thank you all very much. And as a final exercise, we were asked to create a budget, which we did and which, I dare say, was a heck of a lot more fun than the budgetary process you all go through. We simply had to affix sticky dots to broad categories of budget, and we, when we finished, in about 10 minutes, which, you know, no sweat, right? But I mention this because, interestingly, we created a budget that largely paralleled the actual fiscal year '23 county budget. And so all of this is basically to say, you know, we approve. You do a great job, and thank you. I don't know how much time I've got left here, but I was simply thinking that, you know, this would be great if we could get more citizens involved and able to participate just because, and I'm thinking in particular of high school students, that we might further an appreciation for what government and the people filling those roles provides us and so offer a window into possible.
Brennan, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
That completes the list, but if any citizen would like to come forward, you have four minutes to address the board if you'll state your name and address.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bob Beat. I live here in Christiansburg. First, I'd like to say I agree with the responses to that meeting with the board with those answers on how to handle those circumstances first. The Parks and Rec and the police and so on and so forth, but that's not why I'm here to talk about tonight. You know, last time I was here, I mentioned we can't do business as usual, and here's some more reasons why. You know, we talked about Bank of America forecasting 500,000 layoffs. We had a debt increase, I mean, an interest increase that caused another $2 trillion in debt. And now Amazon's going to lay off 10,000 workers. Meta, Facebook's going to lay off 13%, Zillow's going to lay off 5%, Stripe, 10,000, I mean, excuse me, 1,000 workers, lift 13%. B of A is laying off workers themselves. I just wanted to say how many. Wells Fargo laid off employees as well because I have some family and friends who work for Wells Fargo. You know, we also need to think about the diesel supply. We're down to 20-day diesel supply. And we're thinking about the impact of a train, a possible train strike. So that's some of the reasons why we can't do business as usual. What I've passed around, though, is, you know, I know you guys have upcoming joint session with the school board, and some of these questions I've asked before, and here we go again. So why is CHS renovation three times more than just the completed project at Salem High School renovation? $35 million versus $95 million. How is the Salem High School renovation different than a CHH renovation? Both schools were built by the same architect around near the same time. And I'll give you some references, some of our resources where I used in order to find this information out. In 2007, CHS enrolled 1,043 students. And since then, Montgomery County has grown from 2010, 2021 by 45, 4%, okay? So in 11 years, Montgomery County grew 4%. You know, I guess there's somehow, somewhere there's a projection of growing 5%, so, you know, take that into consideration. So now let's get some quick stats. All right, so Christiansburg High School has 1,008 students. Salem High School has 1,049. The student-teacher ratio is 13 to 1 versus 16 to 1, and now the average is 17 to 1. So Christiansburg has a 13 to 1 ratio. Minority enrollment, 20%. Minority enrollment at Salem is 62%, okay? The overall test ranking, Christiansburg's in the top 20%, Salem is at the top 10%. Math proficiency, they're about the same, 93, 92. Reading proficiency, there's a big difference there. Christiansburg is 83%, and Salem is at 92%. So ask what our school board's doing, what our teachers and what the administration's doing at MCPS, okay? There's concerns about overcrowding. Again, why can't we send students, underutilized Auburn and Montgomery High Schools? You know, I know you guys can't take that money away, but can they not reduce their budget for CHS and move some of those dollars to other their budget for CHS and move, move some of those dollars to other capital expenditures? You know, what is the proof of studies that the open bathrooms that will cut down on bullying or improve school safety? You know, where's the cameras to keep kids from grouping in the stalls? And what happens when more than one kid goes into a stall and there's sex, vaping, you know, smoking, whatever it might be? You know, then I've got a whole list of other questions on the, on there as well. And, you know, they talk about safety, so in the, there's a lot to be said about poor student behavior on, on why MCPS can't hire bus drivers, get substitute teachers, you know, all about poor behavior on students. What is their policy to hold students accountable for their actions? And again, and my other next question, my last question is, we have, my time's up. You have my questions. I'd love to have you guys ask those at the school board meeting. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Wayne Coleman. I'm from Blacksburg. Last time I spoke, I talked to you about things that are going on in the world around us that you may or may not be able to, may or may not be aware of. And we went, my wife and I went to a conference recently. Actually, it was about healthy living, but this flyer, not the one inside, but the outside one was in the welcome packet. And so we started reading some of the articles, and my wife and I are, were aware of most of the articles that were presented in here, but a lot of people that we talked to, friends, family, they're busy working, they're raising families. We're retired, so we have time to read and look online and investigate these things. I found that a lot of people just really don't have any idea what's going on behind the scenes in the world today. And so I hope you'll have time to take a look at just some of these, and I think all of you have my email address, so if you have any questions about any specific item or any thoughts you have about anything. For four and a half years, because of my grandchildren, because of my concern about children and what they're going to face when they get into the working age and into positions where they can sit where you're sitting, I have pursued finding out what is really going on. You can, I'll just say this, you cannot find out from the mainstream media what is going on. Their salaries are being paid by the very people that are perpetrating these kinds of things. The issues that you read in here are being perpetrated by big money people, and so you can't find out from the mainstream media what is really going on. As a matter of fact, what you hear from the mainstream media is, in most cases, the opposite of what is really going on. So I spent three years, out of the four and a half years I've been, my eyes were starting to be open about this, three years, at least eight hours a day, six days a week, researching. So I encourage you to look, and again, if you have questions, please let me know. Thank you for your time. We'll continue praying daily for you guys. Appreciate you.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address.
We have no addendum this evening.
Very good, no addendum. All right, next up, so I have a motion to move into work session.
It's a move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Into work session. All right. First, we have a capital improvement project, Court Services and magistrate facilities. Mr. Woodrow and Mr. St. Clair, welcome.
Good evening.
We're, we're here just to provide a follow-up from the last presentation that you guys received regarding the construction of a court service and magistrate facility that are adjacent to the sheriff's office and jail. Based on that meeting and that presentation that we gave at that time, we, we took direction from the board, and over the course of a few weeks, we've had some meetings and had some discussion and kind of dug a little deeper into the plan from just a footprint into the actual design of the facility and met with folks from Court Services, the magistrate's office, as well as officials from the town of Christiansburg. And so I want to hand it over to Scott to kind of let him walk you through those meetings and give you an update on what we discovered.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. Good evening. So following the meeting here that was held on September the 26th, we, the following week, we went back and met with the stakeholders, staff from Court Services and the magistrate's office to show them the layout that was presented to you. And then we, shortly after that, we went to the town of Christiansburg to discuss parking requirements, and, and Jack Murphy and his staff researched the code, and we had a very productive meeting with the town. And then we asked Jack to revisit the estimate and the schedule. So we'll, we'll start with bullet number two and bullet number three there. This is a overview, again, from Jack's previous presentation of the lot at the corner of Franklin and First Street. And so we, in, in looking at the, looking at the available parking and the code requirement, the, the code has changed in the town of Christiansburg from the 600-foot radius to 900-foot radius. So we have the ability to look a little larger, at a little larger window at what could be available and how we could provide additional opportunities for people to park, as well as there's a 10% reduction allowed in the required parking for mass transit, which is available on East Main Street, which is a great benefit. And so Jack outlined his approach to looking at the code, the town code. The town concurred with Jack's approach, and he demonstrated the same outline and the same thought process that was used when the courthouse plans were developed and submitted to the town of Christiansburg for review and approval. And again, they concurred with the approach. They didn't give us approval. It wasn't a site plan that was presented to them, but we did receive comments that it appeared we followed the code correctly and that that information would need to be shared again on the title sheet, just like any other site plan would be presented. So although there's a, there, you know, Jack, at the presentation last time, he did note that there was a loss of 47 spaces, but, you know, since, since then, we've had a project that coated the concrete parking deck over the garage, and the, the deck was closed for about three weeks. We received zero comments about lack of parking or where to park. And so Brad has had some discussions too with courthouse staff. The, there's going to be a little stronger guidance in getting employees to park in the garage, which they're, they're not doing today, and which, that's what the parking garage was for, was for their security and their safety. So although we have a loss of parking spaces overall, we have help in the code for mass transit and looking at a larger window for the available spots throughout the area. So back to the, back to revisiting with the magistrate and court services. So if you, if you look closely at this outline here, the, the shape of the footprint there that he had presented to you before, you'll see some changes up here in this, in this corner, and that's, that's this area right here of Court Services. And one of the unique things about this, you know, one of the comments that was shared amongst the supervisors at the September meeting was planning for future growth, accommodating, looking out into the future and, and making sure that we're addressing the growth for this, these particular functions. And so the, the magistrate portion of the project has additional interview or hearing, hearing and interview rooms, one additional one for police, for law enforcement, and one additional one for the public. And then one of the key comments from the court services was they wanted to address circulation within their office space to make sure that when they were dealing with the various clientele that they see, that they could accommodate bringing someone back to an area that was secure but was not open to another visitor that may be coming in to see them for a similar situation. So we have addressed the growth question, and we have revisited with the stakeholders with this specific floor plan that you see here, and they have concurred with our approach. So in regards to a proposed schedule, we have, Jack is proposing a December to a May 2023 design period with bid and award in the summer of 2023 and beginning demolition activities in late summer with construction extending into late 2024, counter-year 2024, and the project being completed by December of 2024. The estimate that we have been given, again, he commented about being in that $5 million mark, and that number he is, he remains comfortable. It is going to be a $5 million project, and that, again, based upon square footage of new construction, you can, you can look this up as well, and I can share resources for you in regards to estimating that, but that, that cost for new construction is in the low 300s to around $360 to $370 a square foot. And so based on being near that upper end of that range, you have the, the, the actual new structure, the new building, you have, the demolition is included in that number, parking lot, paving, landscaping, and the Sally Port that's been discussed previously, as well as the fencing for the secured parking for Court Services and the magistrate. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Start with Supervisor Shepherd.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
I only have one question. If, if the employees are not parking in the garage, where are they parking?
In the parking lot.
In the lot?
In the lot and on top of the garage, and there's a lot of spaces underneath that just aren't being utilized, so you don't really see that when you drive by.
Right.
But so there's a-
Brad, could you talk?
Yeah, there's a discussion about utilizing that better and knowing that if we bring this facility here, that, that'll need to be utilized. And so, you know, it was originally designed for courthouse staff, and we would like for that to come to fruition.
I didn't know, I knew there was a parking garage underneath that was keyed, and, but I didn't know who used it or who could use it.
Yeah, there are, there are some staff that use it, clerks and the judges, but there's still some space under there for some more folks.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Fitchowski.
Can you go back to the picture there of the room breakdown? I see the, the doorway to the breathalyzer room and the two interview rooms. I, I'm assuming that that opens out into the Sally Port, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I don't see any doors leading from those rooms to get in front of the magistrate. Or am I, is the magistrate going to be sitting there on those, is that like a table?
This is a counter.
Got you.
Right here.
All right. So if, if, if an officer brings somebody into the breathalyzer room, runs the test, they have to, they have to leave and then come back in one of those other doors?
Yeah, essentially, there, there'll be two rooms there for interfacing with the magistrate for having the bond hearings and probable cause hearings, and then the separate breath alcohol room so that it can be going on at the same time as a hearing. And then the magistrate on duty will kind of be in that middle. They'll, they'll be able, on the one side, deal with folks that are under arrest that are being brought in by law enforcement, but also have access to anybody that may walk in on the public side, which is down below. So it gives them that opportunity to kind of serve both sides back and forth, as you kind of know they have to do from time to time. That was the design that, that the magistrate felt would be most beneficial for them.
Okay, so I, I was thinking, I know in other localities, the, once somebody is tested in the breathalyzer room, that they, they can just walk right through a door and be right in front of a magistrate too.
Yeah, that, that was, we talked about maybe a doorway leading into that, but when we talked to the magistrate, they said they would, they would prefer maybe them going back out into the, the Sally Port and bringing them back in in case that room is occupied. That way they could vacate the, they could go ahead and vacate the breath alcohol room and open it up for maybe somebody else that needs it, and there's, there'll be area there in the Sally Port that's secure that they could stand by, kind of out of the weather if need be.
Couldn't they extend that white desk and take part of that breathalyzer room and-
I, I think, I don't want to-
Partition it so that-
I don't want to misspeak, but we, we did measure the current breath alcohol room, and we wanted to get a similar square footage, and maybe it could, but we wanted to make sure that we provided enough square footage for the ventilation so that you didn't get that cross-contamination while somebody was in the room and get errors in the machine. So, but maybe it could be. I, I see what you're saying there. We could look at that.
Do they, did they tell you how many magistrates would be on duty at any given time?
Two, most time during the day, there are two, sometimes three, depending on the, the volume. And this, this plan would provide, if, if in the future they added a magistrate, they were given a position, that would allow them enough space to expand that. It also gives them that ability to do some video magistrating, so if they have extra bodies here and there's something going on in another part of another district or whatever that they could do that out of one of those rooms as well.
It, it looks like a good plan, and if they're happy with it, then I, I would assume that, that it's going to work. I like the separation between the court services and the magistrate. That's good. I just, my concern was, I can remember many nights getting in line with three or four other officers with their prisoners waiting to use either the breathalyzer or to get in front of the magistrate, and I was kind of hoping that, that might be avoided, but times as they are, it just depends how many show up at the same time, I guess, so.
Take a number sometimes.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I got.
Supervisor King.
Well, I'm going to start off where I did last time. We start talking about this. When it first come up, we discussed about renovating the old building, would save taxpayers Then it decided we need to have a Sally Port, which that was involved with that, but still saved taxpayers about $500,000. All right, the board at the time voted to spend $27,000 to secure the building so we can have it ready to renovate. I still want to see what it's going to cost to renovate that building before we build a new one. Our obligation is to the taxpayers of Montgomery County to save every dollar we can. I'm not putting this towards y'all, I'm just talking to the board itself. Our job is to save taxpayers money. The first thing we had was the Sally Port. Everything was good. I don't know what's changed now. We need a new building.
I, I could speak briefly to the Sally Port, the buil, the building part maybe a little bit, but I know that the Sally Port that was, that was presented in the original renovation was a- original renovation was a single lane between the two buildings, which, when we go out there and actually look at it, um, it, it presents a couple problems. One is, a lot of things underneath that were gonna have to be rerouted, as far as power and, and, um, and telecommunications infrastructure and fiber that runs straight under that, so to build anything on top of that is gonna require some rerouting of that, not that it can't be done, but it, it would be some added expense, but, um, ingress and egress out to South Franklin Street, uh, because it would be a one-way-through Sally Port because it would only be wide enough for one car. And when we met with, uh, which I don't think happened in the original plan, uh, we, we went and met with, uh, the sheriff's office and some of the, the stakeholders, and we started talking about it, because when I first saw it, I thought, it, it was really a waste of money to build a single-car Sally Port, because at, at any given time, there's two, three, four cars in the lot with people getting unloaded, and so if you, if you build a, a single-car Sally Port, you're gonna have one car there that can unload securely in a van, and, and two more cars that can't. So it's really not feasible to build a Sally Port in that area, uh, where it's at. Uh, it's not to say it couldn't be, couldn't be built in a, in a different means, but the original plan that was submitted with the renovation, that Sally Port, with everybody's, uh, input was that it just would not be worth the money, and it wouldn't, wouldn't be something that would serve. Um, and then when we met with Court Security and, uh, or Court Services and the magistrate regarding the renovation of the building and combining the, the entrance and exit, they had some real concerns about the people that would be coming and going out of the same entrance, and so we were trying to find a way to separate those two, uh, entrances, uh, for the Court Services folks, the, the people that come to see them, and then the, the folks that are being brought into the magistrate that sometimes may interact with each other, not in such a good, um, a manner, and there was really no way with the square footage and the footprint and the way the building is to really accomplish that and meet the space needs that they need, uh, now, much less the future, and so...
ADA requirements.
Yeah, and ADA requirements and so on and so forth. So that's kind of some of the things that were brought to our attention during our meetings. That's not to, to, to push one, uh, or go one way or the other, I'm just giving kind of the information that we were providing.
And we did not, at the, in the beginning, when we discussed this previously, we did not have the meetings with the stakeholders that we did this time, so we were not aware of those factors that Brad's discussed.
Now, the, uh, got one question. Court Service and magistrate, are they state employees or county?
They're state employees.
Huh?
State.
Just one, just one question. We're gonna have a secure parking for them, but we don't have secure parking for our employees? I mean, you know yourself, in tax time, people get upset paying high taxes. I think it'd be wise to, my opinion, either ask the state to pay for it or do away with it. We can't secure somebody else's employees if we can't secure our own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Demots.
Thank you both. Um, I have just two questions. Um, the first question being more of a comment, actually. Um, I appreciate the expla, explanation on the parking and, and the fact that you guys went and had a meeting to clarify the various restrictions. The only feedback that I have heard from many members of the community is, um, to, to be, um, maybe generous with the handicap parking spaces, um, at this facility, so if we have the opportunity and can fit within zoning, I don't know that we would be prevented from adding additional handicap parking spaces for any reason. Um, but I have received a request to consider adding more than the code requires. Um, the other question I have is actually, um, about this plan of, down at the bottom right where it says Court Services and there's that vestibule above it, um, this is more of a design consideration than anything else. Um, that little carved-out area in between the vestibule and the room marked OM, um, I just look at that and I think, um, that's a, an opportunity, a space opportunity for, um, for example, I know we've got the vestibule at the Christiansburg Library that sometimes has been problematic, just because a little space like that, that maybe has some cover, um, could be attractive. Also, it's kind of a nightmare if you plant grass in there to get in there and, and do any kind of lawn care. Um, so I would, I would maybe consider if you could extend that vestibule over, you could even put in some benches or a kiosk, an informational kiosk of some sort about, um, the facility. Um, but other than that, I do appreciate the presentation very much from both of you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And with regard to the handicap parking, we did, um, relocate some of the handicap parking spaces from the original drawing that are closer to the entrances of these buildings, and there is space that we could extend, add additional handicap parking.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I had the same concern about the handicap parking, because, you know, I've heard that concern after we built the courthouse, and, and so I want to make sure that we don't get in a situation where we keep hearing complaints about there's not enough handicap parking or where it's located, so I share Supervisor Demots' concern on that. Otherwise, um, you know, I don't have any other questions, I thank you for getting all this together. Um, I just know from experience, parking is always an issue, and I guess, well, there is one other thing. How will you get the county employees to use the parking they're supposed to use in the garage?
I, I think, and one of the conversations I had was, was with one of the judges, and we, we were talking about, you know, the, the need for a Sally Port and...
Mm-hmm.
More secure, uh, load and unloading, but that it would be taking up some parking, and, and he kind of suggested that, that there's some opportunity underneath, so I think that they're willing to, court, court staff are willing to help us out...
Okay.
...make those suggestions.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I just had one question, and I think, Mr. St. Clair, you might have answered that for me. On the Sally Port, how many cars can that hold? Is that six that's showing here, or is that just for illustration?
Yeah, the, the plan would be to have six, and, and potentially, yeah, this is kind of what I, I would say maybe a conceptual design of it, we haven't, like, went out and measured and, and everything, but the, the idea would be to have, you know, two rows of three with an open lane down the middle, so that you're not kind of trapped in, you can come and go as you need to, but, um, that, that's the, that's the plan.
And then on the drawing on page six, so that counter for the magistrate, that would be either side, so they could do the interview rooms for the general public that might be coming in, or someone coming in through the Sally Port, is that correct?
Correct.
Could be, versus, it can go, it will be open for both, depending on which way clientele comes in, correct?
Yeah, they, they have to be able to kind of go...
And forth.
Go between and, and be able to handle walk-ins on each side, and, and so this will give them the bill, they're kind of in the middle between the, the two different sides, and they're able to just go back and forth as needed.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Uh, one more comment I would like to add, we did give the cost estimate of about $5 million. As we go through the next design phase, we'll have a more accurate, more precise estimate for that, and because of the economy and, uh, supply chain issues and that kind of thing, the number is not going to be exactly $5 million, that's our current estimate, but we'll refine that as we move forward and bring that back to you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, we're gonna take a quick 10-minute break, and we will come right back.
We'll be back. Oh, golly. Oh.
Okay, we'll continue on.
Oh, yeah.
Items of consent, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Moving on next to old business, first up, tax exemption request, Agafe Center Corporation.
Motion.
Second.
The motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next up, tax exemption request, Community Health Center of the New River Valley Free Clinic.
Madam Chair, did we want to talk about that one?
Yeah.
A discussion?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I'll make a motion just for, so we can discuss.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Okay, and I'll second.
And now open for discussion.
Yeah, my concern, and I've mentioned it before, that, and I know it's happened, something that maybe we can correct in the future, but my feeling is, in looking at the ordinance, it basically says in the article that any county, city, town may by designation or classification exempt from real taxes by ordinance, real property, blah, 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 uses, that uses, uses, excuse me, such property for religious, charitable, patriotic, historical, and to me, since this particular property is a vacant lot, I just don't see that fitting in, you know, many of these nonprofits and organizations provide valuable services to our citizens, but a vacant lot doesn't, I am 100% behind the Free Clinic, I think it's a great organization, definitely want to see them succeed, but I think by doing this, I think we're, I don't know, I think we're going down the wrong path, so I am not inclined to vote for any vacant lots anymore.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay, at agenda prep, we talked about that maybe what we could do since they weren't scheduled to build their building yet, is just tell them to come back when they break ground for their building, so that we know that the building was going on there, and I think wasn't it, was it 2023, what was the date?
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
And so we were thinking maybe like, we could send a letter or something to encourage them to do that, explaining the situation that we needed to have the groundbreaking and know that they were going to have the building.
Okay.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, I would be, I would be in favor of that, I just, I can't see us taking chances with organizations that have all, that are well intentioned and plan on doing something, but don't for years, and then at some point realize they're not going to be able to do it, and turn around and sell it, after they've received years of exemption and the county taxpayers don't get any kind of relief, so, yeah, I would be in favor of that.
Marty, is that something we could change policy, maybe reword that at the beginning of year when we do our organization meeting?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, we'll put in there that the board would not consider any property that's not developed, that's still vacant.
So, since there's a motion on the floor and we're discussed it, like, and we were going to vote it up or down, do we need to?
Continue the vote.
Do we need to put something in the motion for them to come back, or, I don't know?
I mean, I guess you can vote no, if you, that's how you choose, or we could delay the vote, talk to them and see if they want to withdraw it, and bring it back when they do start construction.
Is there?
Can we just vote no and?
Yeah.
And tell them the reason, tell them the reason why?
You can do that as well, yeah.
And is there a limit that when they can reapply?
Nope.
Are there expenses associated with applying?
Nope, no. The only restriction is you got to apply by July 1.
Any further discussion?
Just like if we, if we're going to vote it up or down, and we vote it down tonight, can we send them the letter so they know what's going on?
Yeah, why have we done it?
Yeah, yeah, so they understand, okay.
And then moving forward in, when we, organization meeting, change the policy?
Yeah, the first meeting in January, we'll bring that to you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
No.
Mr. Motts?
No.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Chair Blevins?
No.
Have six no's.
Next up, tax exemption request, Montgomery Museum, Lewis Miller Regional Arts.
I'd like to move it for, and then ask a question after the second.
I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, now discussion.
What about the retail space?
It's a problem, because the ordinance is clear, and what you do is you're granting tax exemption for them to use that property in a way that's consistent with their charitable and benevolent purposes, and if they're leasing that out to say, yoga place or photography place, that, that does not, then, that property is no longer or isn't being used for the reasons you're exempting it for.
So there's no way just to exempt part of the property, you have to do all or nothing?
I think that would be difficult, because it's one parcel.
We have the good fortune of having Casey Jenkins here, the executive director.
Yeah, could he like help us?
Yeah, could you step up here and help us out? Is this something you want to proceed with?
So that, that is a bit of new information to the Board of Directors, so, and I understand this is not a public hearing, but prorated then is not an option, it's a parcel that is taken all or one, all or nothing?
Correct.
Right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, then I think it's probably in our best interest, if you would allow us to at least temporarily think about that and remove it, remove that from the agenda.
Can we table it?
Yeah, we, well, we can delay, we won't table it, we'll just pass a motion to consider it at our Janu, at our December meeting, can we do that?
Yeah.
Will that be enough time for you?
That would be sufficient, yeah, that'd be greatly appreciated.
December 12th, is that correct?
All right. Hey, one more question before you walk off.
Yeah.
Have y'all asked the town of Christianburg for exempt?
No, I believe that would only come from the county for tax exemption.
So town don't charge the taxes down there?
Well, they, they follow your lead on that.
Right.
They will charge taxes if you charge taxes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, well, I appreciate your, that curveball, and thank you for rolling with it, thank you.
Do we have a, do we need a friendly amendment to the?
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, friendly amendment to push this to the December meeting for, put it on the old business.
And that's fine with my motion.
And I would make that friendly amendment that we move it to January.
December.
December, I'm sorry.
All right, so I have an amendment friendly and a friendly second, pending discussion. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, next up, tax exemption request, Mountain Empire Services of Southwest, NRV Community Services.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
It's the Wade's Building, and they've already bought it, and it will be, yeah, New River Community Services.
Is it the only building? I'm seeing three, or three parcels on here.
Yeah, there's only one building, but there's a couple, a smaller little parcel that is owned by the, it's part of the old Wade's property.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I know it was Wade's building, but I seen three parcels, I was trying to figure out what.
Yeah, it's, it's just the way it was carved up a long, long time ago.
They're not going to rent theirs out, are they?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
He's home to space.
Maybe we should clarify, make sure that in the application, clarification of that.
Okay, we, yeah, we'll do that as well.
Organization, okay. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Hey Marty, Marty, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If we do do tax exemption on somebody, and we find out that they started renting it to private people, can we pull back on the?
Yes, sir, yeah. Once they do, and we find out, they, really by almost operation of law, they lose the exemption.
Okay.
And then we would then tell them that, because then they're no longer consistent with your ordinance, and then we have a three-year period, every three years we do a review and they have to reapply, and we check at that point to see if anything's changed, and so you don't have to wait till that period, once they stop using it, once they use it inconsistently with the ordinance, then they lose the status, and they become liable for taxes at that point.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question? If they were to rent it to a nonprofit?
If they rent it in a use that's consistent with the purposes that you grant an exemption, then that's okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, on to new business, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, James Lemon.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next up, scheduled public hearing for proposed ordinance to establish cigarette tax.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Way ahead, Todd.
Well, to get started, you know, I've always been against any increase in taxes, any. Like we said here earlier in the year, we moved personal property tax from 100% down to 80. Majority of us voted to do away with merchant capital tax. We're getting ready to go through real estate. We sit here, each one of us sit here and said, we got to do something to help the citizens. Well, please explain to me how you're going to put higher taxes on somebody is going to help them.
Because they may quit smoking.
And that's whose business?
That's their business.
That is correct. When it first started, the argument was, we could give Parks and Rec $100,000 to help them. Beginning of the budget season, we give Parks and Rec the $100,000. Why does the county need this money? Please somebody answer that for me.
I'm going to kind of have to go along with Mr. King on this, as far as the taxes, I can't see, like he said, taking half of them down and exempt part of them and then add one back, I was a smoker for now 15 years and quit, so I feel the pain of those that smoke, I don't recommend it, but.
Vice?
Oh, go ahead.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Are you?
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, you know where I'm going to come from for this, because I think I've said this over and over again, the state only gives us certain ways to raise revenue, we only have certain things in our toolbox. My personal opinion is the whole tax structure in the state of Virginia needs to be redone, the reason that never happens is because elections happen in the Journal Assembly every two to four years, depending on which part of the Journal Assembly you're in, so for that never happened in the state, for them to go back and look at the antiquated tax system that they have created, would really take some powerful folks going down there with some guts, so, since those are our only ways to raise revenue, to get to Supervisor King's question, why do we need the money? I think we had a whole work session on capital projects, we just saw tonight a $5 million project, we know that there are needs all over in our budget, not only in capital, but in operating, and so, you know, when you have a way to raise revenue that's been given to you, you just have to deal with the ways that if, that we're allowed to do it, and so I'm in favor of doing it, we asked the Journal Assembly for that, I think, over and over again, at least since I've been on the board since 1996, we always ask for it, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Supervisor Demots?
I just want to point out that we're not going to pass or not pass the tax tonight, this is just advertising an opportunity for public comment on whether or not we should, so I am always going to be in favor of advertising for a public hearing, and that in no way indicates, I mean, we haven't heard from the public on this yet, I haven't, but I would like the opportunity.
Thank you, and Supervisor Demots, I was gonna, you took the words out of my mouth that this was just for the public hearing, I oppose the cigarette tax, however, I do want to move forward with the public hearing to see what our citizens have to say, whether they're for it or against it, but I would oppose it since I tried, we've got the merchants' tax abolished, and I'd already tried to lower the real estate tax, so I don't want to replace it with another tax, but I would move forward on the public hearing, so we can hear from the citizens if therefore are against it. Any further discuss, Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit to that, I'm not a big tax increase person, but I do not look at the cigarette tax the same way as I look at merchants' capital or adjusting for an outrageously inflated vehicle price, I look at it, and I believe that Supervisor Demots mentioned this in previous meetings, that she looks at it as a sin tax, I don't know if she still feels that way?
Will do.
But I look at the price of cigarettes, I like Supervisor Shepherd used to smoke, I think when I was 19, I was up to three and a half packs of Marlboros a day.
Whoa.
And I'm still alive, I can't believe it. But that's what a wife will do to you, she'll make you quit, but anyway, I look at the cost of a pack of cigarettes right now, and I'm thinking, what difference does 40 cents make, that's like when I go buy fuel for my truck, and it, I keep seeing it going up, and hey, if I go across town, I can save 20 cents on a gallon, but it's still $5 a gallon, I mean, so I think it's, it's one of those things, it's, it's a drop in the bucket, and it was my understanding that the entire amount collected was going to go to the?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, I know we set it aside for the, for the budget purposes, but that's my understanding, that it's going to go towards Parks and Rec, which is growing by leaps and bounds, and we want it to, so I think it's a good place for that money to go, and a good reason to raise that money, but that's, that's just my thoughts on it, and I certainly don't mean to increase anybody's cost, but I think it's minimal for what we're going to get out of it, I also have heard in the past arguments that, why would you do this to businesses out in the county, and I kind of look at it, aren't the businesses in town, don't they pay county taxes? Aren't they county citizens? This is an argument I think we've heard about us sharing money with, with the town, that we tax, and so therefore we should kick in an extra, which, I'm not proposing that, I'm just using that as an example, so, I think if all the businesses in town, in two towns, are paying that tax or collecting that tax, then if you even the playing field, then everybody's the same, so, that's, I think it's a thing of fairness, but the last argument is the one that Chair Blevins said, and others, that it is just a public hearing, and this way we get to hear from the public on where they stand, so.
One more thing, Ms. Angie, I hate to bring you in on this, how much did we have left over last year out of the budget?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, more than $100,000, more than $200,000, we included $100,000 this year because we knew we couldn't implement it if you did approve it, it's July 1st, so we only put half a year, we estimate it would be $200,000 for an entire 12-month period.
I'll just leave you with this thought, we've had money left over out of our budget every year, why do we need to tax our citizens? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
I'm voting yes, and this is just for the public hearing, I'm against this tax.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Future capital cap, county capital projects appropriations.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Reports, County Attorney.
Well, I actually have one tonight, so, I apologize. I wanted to just give you a quick update on the opioid litigation settlement funds, I know it's kind of been out in the press a little bit, and we've, we've been getting letters, the opioid abatement authority is kind of starting to, I guess, kicking to action, they have, they hired an executive director who's now hired one person to help him, the board's been appointed, and they've been meeting, and so they're moving forward with setting up a grant program that, I think the application process is supposed to open up in January, so we should be getting more guidance on that, but just to kind of give all this some context, the county along with the state, and all the other counties and cities, entered into settlement agreements with the distributors and Janssen, so there's two settlements that, that the county has already gotten direct payments from, we've gotten payments of approximately $300,000 already. We've gotten payments of approximately $300,000 already that we've gotten directly to us. The distributor one is a 16-year payment. We've gotten two payments of that totaling about 100 grand. We'll get about 1.147, about 1.1 and a half million dollars over the 16 years. The, that amount is about 50,000 a year. It'll get up to about 75 a year, and then it'll decrease again. The Jansen one is the one, we, they paid upfront four years. So we got a payment a couple weeks ago of $196,000 directly to us. And then that settlement's much less, and for us, we're only gonna get a total of 263 for that. And then the third source of funds is what we call indirect payments. And that's the money that the opioid abatement authority has. And there's about half a million dollars that we have a right to, we being Montgomery County. And so we wouldn't be competing for that money, but we have to go through their process to get that. In FY '23, which is next, I guess, soon, we'll have 108,000 from them, or almost 109,000. So if you total that up, we're at about $400,000 that we will have available to start spending if we so choose. The way the money has to be spent is, the state and the settlement funds have tried to avoid what happened in the tobacco settlements, is that they want the money to go toward abatement of opioid addiction and the harmful effects of it. And so the use of funds is restricted. This is all the funds, not only the money that we have already in our coffers, but the money that we can apply for. They cannot supplement locally funded efforts that you're already doing. You cannot charge indirect costs. And you have to, the funding has to be designed to treat, prevent, or reduce opioid use disorder, or the misuse of opioids through some type of evidence-based or evidence-informed methods, programming, or strategies. That's very broad, and I think the authority's gonna come up with some more guidance on how that money can be used. We will have to implement and probably maintain performance measures, you know, connected to those expenditures, like number of clients served, amount of hours of education provided, things of that nature. We'll also have to cooperate with the authority, providing them with information on how the money's implemented, the methods, programs, and strategies. So, because the way the settlements are set up is that all that information has to be sent then to the defendants who are providing the money. And so the abatement authority will be really the area that the state created to handle that, but we'll be cooperating with them. So really, in the next, I don't know, couple months maybe, the county administration's gonna have to figure out how they wanna set up a program to start looking for ways to spend the money and spend it through, you know, some other, you know, what actors, like you have the court system, you have community services. And then the other options are the grant programs. And we, the towns cannot, since we've heard a lot about the towns tonight, the towns cannot apply for this money, only the counties and the cities. But we can partner with the towns and any programs that they wanna do. And then we can seek grant money, because there's gonna be millions of dollars that the authority's gonna have that we can also try to get, that we don't have a direct right to spend, but we can compete for. And those grants are gonna be competitive, and you're gonna only be able to win, I think, if you do it in some type of joint fashion, either with a community service board or with a town or towns. And so that's another thing we need to think about. Or if you guys have any ideas, I'd suggest passing it on to Craig, and then we'll move from there. If you have any questions, let me know.
I do. I just heard either, I think it was yesterday, that there's a settlement from Walmart for a billion dollars. So is that part of it?
No, that's not even in the thing. And the other big settlement that's started, you're starting to see it, including Walmart, is the pharmacies. We've also sued them, we're in with them. And they have been reluctant until recently to start talking about settlement. And so what happened was, there was a case, I forget what state it was in, where they got hit pretty hard. I think it was maybe CVS or Walgreens, one of them. And so we, there'll be another chunk of money that we'll be seeing as well, from those. And Walmart's in that pharmacy branch, so...
So we would have to file against them?
No, no, we've already done all that. And so what we'll see is another amount of money will come probably directly to us from the pharmacies, and then another portion of that money will go to the abatement authority that we'll have a right to. And then there'll be another chunk that we can apply for.
May I add something? Okay, so at our VACO Board of Directors meeting this past Sunday, we did have a presentation from two of the gentlemen that are, that are right now the VACO Board of, they came to the VACO Board of Directors to present the information they had from the abatement authority. Okay, and they've actually hired a third person now. They're just getting... Yeah, they're just getting things going. And anyway, one of the important things, and I forwarded this information to Angie and to Marty, and I can forward it to you guys too if you like, but there is going to be an important meeting. I think it's gonna be scheduled for January 19th by VACO VML. And it's gonna be geared towards finance folks. And I did bring up the point that, you know, our attorney had been sort of high, you know, handling all of this. What about, were they gonna make presentations to county attorneys? They wrote that down as a suggestion. Another person brought up schools, school systems. And then there was, and I think they were gonna go ahead and present to community services boards. So they spoke about funds coming out in the, I wanna say June. Let me, hold on. They actually, no, funds to be distributed by spring. So I don't know if they're talking about the grant funds or what funds, but...
Yeah, yeah, they're talking about the grant funds, because the applications are gonna come out in January.
Yeah. So that was good that, you know, we got to hear that, you know, because it started making you think. But it sounds like to me, and I don't know how April might feel about this, but it sounds like to me, it's sort of a complicated process. But they definitely don't want it to be like the Tobacco Commission. They want the money to go where it needs to go.
Correct. And the local attorneys have been involved since day one. I mean, we, you know, we hired outside counsel, and they represent, I think there's almost 40 of us in the state, and they've done a great job. And we have quarterly conference calls, and then we also had a seminar that me and Angie sat in on from, it was the executive director did it.
Right. Good.
Yeah, so...
I think the overarching message from their presentation was that the money absolutely has to be used for treating opioid problems in the community or solving them in the community. And then we also have to prove that we've used it in that fashion. So there'll be a little bit of administration, I would think.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, good, thanks. That's all I have.
Deputy County Administrator, Ms. Seal.
I do have a very short report update, not like Marty's extraordinarily unusual, long report. I wanted to give you a brief update on the reassessment of real estate. We expect that the vendor, Wompler Ains, will mail the first notices for reassessment this coming week. We had hoped they would mail them this week, but there were a little, a few little bumps along the road that delayed that just a little bit. The informal appeals process with Wompler Ains is scheduled from December 5th through the 23rd. That will be coming out. And they will have these informal appeals by phone, mail, email, or in person by appointment only. No walk-ins. They listened to your concerns, and they respect that. They will complete their work by December 31st. And then today, we had an organizational meeting for the Board of Equalization, and they're gonna begin to hold their formal hearings February 22nd, and they're to run through March 29th if they need to go that long. That's all I have.
Very good. Supervisors' reports. Supervisor Demats?
Oh, good, I get to go first. Okay, so Supervisor, Vice Chair Biggs has already talked a little bit about the VACO Conference, the Virginia Association of Counties Conference. I spell it out just because we're, maybe not everybody knows what VACO means. So the Virginia Association of Counties Conference, several of us attended it this past Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, getting back last night. And it was a really, really great conference, and I just wanna highlight some of the educational opportunities that we had there. I attended educational sessions on the state of affordable housing and the Commonwealth, energy policy and the direction that that's going in the Commonwealth, and also the roles of consultants and mediators and when they can be helpful in public administration. Also, through the committees that I participate in, as part of my role with VACO, I participate in the Environment and Agriculture Committee and also the Energy Committee. And through those committees, we had presentations about bio solids, PFAs or PFOS, talking about biomass as an energy product. So it was a really interesting conference with a lot of education that we gained through that. If anybody has any desire to talk about anything that I learned there, I'd be happy to. A lot of the educational sessions are provided as a panel, so there's not necessarily slides. But I did get some slides related to PFAs, which were very interesting. I also wanted to highlight an event that occurred in late October that was really a pretty cool opportunity to showcase something that I know that this board is all very proud of, which is the old Prices Fork Elementary School. I was invited to participate in my role as an employee of the developer of that school project. But this was the 2022 Rural Planning Caucus of Virginia. We did a tour at the property, and it was really cool. We had people from all over the rural parts of Virginia out of the property and looking at how public-private partnership can work to develop affordable housing, community kitchens, mixed-use developments that really benefit the communities that they were in. And it was a really nice opportunity to showcase Montgomery County to people from all over the state. A lot of people had questions about how in the world they could get members of our community, of their communities, involved in that way. And it just really highlighted how special it is to be in Montgomery County, where people, businesses, and the government do partner on initiatives that really serve the community very well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I have no report.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I should have a report, but I really, I can't think of anything to report other than Supervisor Demats mentioned PFAS. That came up in a, again, in a regional, at the regional authority for, you know, solid waste disposal. They're still grappling with it, still learning more about it. And again, reiterated something I think I've already told you, that they expect rules and regulations to be changing pretty soon, so... That in itself is gonna cost money. And since we participate in all these organizations, that means it's gonna cost us more money. So that's something that we shouldn't look forward to, but we should plan on it and expect it. And that's never good news, is it? But that's all I got.
Supervisor King?
Have no report, but everybody knows winter's coming. Please clean your chimney and check your smoke detectors, carbon dioxide testers, and make sure you're ready for the cold weather. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay, you guys know I have to do my VACO commercial, so before I forget it, if you want to be involved in any of the committees on VACO, you know, just let Dean Lynch know by December 31st. And if you want to be involved in the supervisor certification course, like the one that I took, it's gonna be completely revamped, it's only gonna take a year. And I have a feeling that it, that it's going to be really good because it doesn't sound like you're gonna have to write papers. It sounds more like it's gonna be very interactive, and you won't have a pile of books to read. It doesn't sound like it's really, I think it's gonna be good. So if you wanna do either one of those, let Dean Lynch know. Okay, now, what happened at the VACO Virginia Association of Counties election? So you all know, the new VACO president is Jason Bellis from Lancaster County. Ann Malik is the president-elect from Albemarle County. Ruth Larson is the first vice president from James City County. And William Cartney from Isle of Wight is the new second vice president. Don Hart will remain a secretary treasurer from Akamak County. So we have quite a lot of diversity there. And I think we might have mentioned this at a meeting in the past, but you're probably aware that VACO did the same thing we had to do, and we had to redo our regions. So I served on that committee. And Montgomery County is now in Region 11. There are 13 regions, we're in Region 11 now. And that consists of our county, Giles, Craig, Bodatot, Bedford, and Roanoke County. We, that region represents about 337,989 citizens. And there are only two people that can serve as regional directors. And we're very lucky that we have April Demats serving. She was elected to a two-year term. And Billy Martin from Bodatot was elected to a two-year term. So they will be our two representatives. So again, we're very lucky that we have Montgomery County represented in that capacity. I attended my last VACO board meeting as past president, and it was very sad. But I know that we're gonna be in good hands with April and Billy representing us. And let me see what else. Oh, for workshops. I, of course, you know me, I had to go to the state budget preview, the tax policy, and how the state and counties can work as partners. You know how I love to work as partners with the state, get some of that money. And then I went through to the K-12 Educational Funding Initiatives, which was very interesting. We had a really good turnout at that one, and lots of, lots of questions for the General Assembly members that were there. So I think that, I think the conference was a good one. It was well-attended, it took place in Richmond. And as always, VACO staff did a good job in organizing everything. The only other thing I'd like to add, we've been talking about reassessment, okay? And we know that when our citizens get their reassessment information, you know, it's gonna be shocking to take that probably out of the envelope, okay? But one thing I think we need to remind everybody about is that the board will be considering all of that during the budget process. And we're all aware that those assessments, pretty much across the board, are going to be high. So just to sort of like, maybe send out a calming message to let folks know that we will be looking at that, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be active for our citizens. I think that's what I'm trying to say, just to calm it all down a little bit. And that's all I have.
Very good. Well, I attended the VACO conference as well. I think it was very informative, it was great discussion. I attended the, of course, tax policy and how we can work with our state partners. Also, I attended for the Department of Social Services and updates and the challenges that they face. And of course, transportation, and I'm big on transportation, was Interstate 81 discussions, and of course, passenger rail. And it was discussed in that meeting that, you know, they are looking for moving it on to Bristol, and that would mean partnership with Tennessee. And so that was interesting to hear that. It was also interesting to hear some of our state legislators say that they, some talk on state income tax, too. Of course, this will be a short session, so I don't think any of that will be in the near future. But it was interesting to hear those... future, but it was interesting to hear those topics. Other things, I wanted to give a shout-out to Christiansburg High School for their Veterans Day celebration ceremony and luncheon. The parade had to be canceled because of the weather, but the students did an excellent job of showing respect and honoring our veterans. And the last thing, just wanted to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for here in Montgomery County. And with that being said, we are adjourned.